Good evening if everyone can find their seat so we can get started in a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Welcome to the May 6th Planning Commission meeting. All members are present. Commissioner Brand is attending remotely. In addition, let the record reflect that Vice Chairperson Brand is participating remotely via Zoom. Vice Chairman Brand, could you please clarify the reason why?
Yes, thank you Chair, Chairwoman. I need to participate remotely due to a medical issue.
Through the Chair, Vice Chair Brand, we have a lot of static on your end from your microphone. Can we maybe lower the volume a little bit or restart your mic?
Is that better?
No, we're still getting feedback. The other option is if you call in versus going through your computer, that might work.
Okay, how about that?
That sounds better. Let's go ahead and go back to you. Oh, try it again.
One more time?
Yes, let's go.
Okay, thank you. I am participating remotely tonight due to a medical issue. Thank you.
We did capture that, but I will ask you while we're starting to do the pledge of allegiance, can we have you try to dial in versus using the mic that's on your computer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Would you like to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. Per the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated or if approved by the Chair. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers, as orange forms on either side. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. While Zoom participation during this general public comment period is not typically accepted, given Vice Chairperson Brand's remote participation, it will be accepted tonight. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with City Clerk within 10 calendar days. April.
Through the Chair, I do have a speaker card that says public comment, but I wanted to double check. Michael Clement, you want to speak during public comment or during the item? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom because I have no general public comment speaker cards. Anyone in Zoom that would like to speak for general public comment? Come on up. I got it. Thank you very much. Mr. Dorman, you put me on the card, so unfortunately I had no clue what that meant. I never make assumptions.
I am so sorry. I am in so much pain, not even my jokes are good tonight. Okay. And I want to make sure. Well. I can never pronounce his last name, but. Eric needs to be off certain projects. Now. Normally I say the man whose name I shall never mention, but I want to make it absolutely positively clear. This isn't staff. Eric needs to be taken off of certain projects. I will discuss at length later during one of the agenda items as to why. But over the course of the six years, more or less that I've listened and have come up and ranted and raved, a lot of it had to do with something Dave Sparling once said. And I'm sorry for freestyling. But he said once, "We can only act upon the information provided to us." I forgot what the circumstances were. But it was clear he had information on a project that he could not bring up. And that information on that project led. I honestly don't remember the results, but the point is that if you're given misinformation, if you're given erroneous information, if you're not given information and all you have is what's in front of you, audience, the council and planning have very little choice. And so when I read things that are in various agendas, rationalizing, let's say CNO, because that's always been my biggest thing. Eric was on that project since 2006. Every single item, every single time that agenda item came up for discussion, review and decision making, he had his hands on it. And I read back to the original 2006 and every modification was slanted towards CNO. Every single one. Unfortunately, the way this is set up, unlike say a court, you don't get to hear both sides, the for or against. You hear one recommendation, whatever that recommendation is. Then you have boneheads like me who will come up and oppose. But as we have seen in the past, whatever I say or whatever anyone says, it may sway you. I think more often than not it does. However, you have to go against what is presented to you. And if you're presented with erroneous or omitted or misdirected information, that gives you very little choice. And as I said, there is an agenda item tonight that has his hands on it. There was a question asked that hopefully you'll get an answer to. But if you read, well, really quickly because I have 34 seconds. People say, I've had this conversation. I had someone say, "Well, planning needs to do diligence." Same thing with council. I don't disagree with that. But if you get information on a Thursday and expect to have yourself fully informed by Tuesday, that's difficult. And when you rely on staff who's supposed to be looking out for the city, you want to have some degree of trust. I don't trust Eric.
At this time, we have no other speaker cards and no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. There's one set of minutes for the regular meeting of April 15th, 2025. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
A second.
All in favor? Do we have to take a roll?
Yeah, if we could roll call just because he's remote. Thank you.
Also, Council, do we need to check that there's no one in the room with him or is that not?
Sure, we can do that. Sorry, Commissioner Brand, can you confirm that there's no one over the age of 18 in the room with you?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Let's do a roll call. Commissioner Johnson?
Standing.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brand?
Aye.
Chairperson floor?
Aye.
She carries for one.
This is item E1, design review for fire station 94. This is an application for design review ER 24-013 to construct a new 8,137 square foot two-story fire station, including two apparatus bays, living areas and associated site improvements on a 13,427 square foot parcel located at 739 First Street, APN 013-091-019.
And through the Chair, if I can make my recusal statement? Decision on this application would have any impact on my own financial interests. Decision on this application would have any impact on my own financial interests. And though I'm very comfortable and confident that I would be an unbiased and neutral decision maker on this item, I do understand the proximity of my employer's building to the site. It may cost some to have questions, so for those reasons, I will recuse myself from participating in this agenda item. And since this is the only item on the agenda this evening, if the Chair, my fellow Commissioners don't object, I will head out for the evening. All right, thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Can I make this thing? I know there have been questions about my participation on this item. I do not believe I have a conflict of interest and can and will be neutral and impartial decision maker this evening. Look forward to hearing from all who wish to address the Commission on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Miguel?
Thank you. Thank you Chairperson or Chairperson floor. Good evening to the Planning Commission. Good evening to the members of the public. This is Miguel Contreras, City of Brentwood, Planning Division. I'm here to present a continuance of fire station 94, which is design review application 24-013. The applicant, the application's location is still the same as last time, 739 First Street, within the downtown specific plan, specifically within the downtown core of the specific plan. Previously, we had a meeting on this, on this application on March 18th. The outcome of that meeting was that the Planning Commission continued the project and requested, requested traffic studies, noise studies, air quality studies. They also directed staff to explain why a conditional use permit would not be required for this application. On March 27th, the applicant declined to prepare the requested studies. The applicant asserted that additional studies are not required since the project qualifies for the infill exemption under SEQA, which is consistent with the city's determination. Regarding the conditional use question that was brought up, so the downtown specific plan requires a conditional use permit. If a civic use, it's outside of the 65-foot retail area on the ground floor. And essentially, the 65-foot retail area is that the first 65 feet of any building in the downtown core, those first 65 feet have to be reserved for retail uses. However, the, the specific plan does have exemptions for civic uses, which is that no portion of the building is outs, well, I apologize. The exemptions that civic uses that are outside of the 65-foot retail area on the ground floor don't require a conditional use permit. So in this case, the, no portion of the building is outside of the 65-foot retail area on the ground floor, as demonstrated by this exhibit, which the longer line shows the 65 feet from the property line and the actual distance is 43 feet. Only incidental mechanical equipment, parking and trash enclosures are outside of the 65-foot retail area. The elevations haven't changed since the previous meeting we had and I place the elevations here for reference. So consistency and recommendation, the, the project is consistent with the downtown specific plan. It's consistent with the downtown core zoning district and the project does qualify for a Class 32 categorical exemption under SEQA guidelines for infill development projects. Staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt resolution number 25-004, approving design review 24-013. And this would conclude my presentation.
Eric.
Good evening Chairperson floor, members of the Commission. Miguel, thank you for that. I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about the item a little bit more globally. It's obviously been in process for quite some time. Staff is keenly aware of all the comments that have been made either in person or in writing and we do not take those lightly. The amount of time and effort that goes into preparing these reports and these agenda items is significant and it's always done in collaboration. It's not a single person that prepares these reports. But to the extent that certain comments come up tonight from members of the public about things like another location for the station, a previously approved lot land adjustment that the city didn't have any role in or responsibility for, I just want to make sure everybody knows that we're aware of those, but we have limited scope in terms of our review and our process. And we're happy to answer any questions that the Commission has either itself or that come up from the public tonight. The other thing, just real quick, in response to the public comment that was made, and I know this is a difficult name to pronounce, it is for me at times as well, even though I've been living with it for quite a while, it's Naulthianus. And I also wanted to say that I take a tremendous amount of pride in the type and level of customer service that I provide, both internally in the building and outside of the building. I've been with the city for almost 25 years and I have never turned down an email, a phone call or a meeting request. So I would encourage anybody at any time to give me a call, stop by the office, send me, send me an email. I'd be happy to talk to you about anything. I'm an open book. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, Eric. And just on a personal note, I've been coming down here since about 2017, first as a citizen and later involved with the, with the government. And I can, I can vouch for what you just said as being absolutely correct. I've always found you to be quite open and honest and forthcoming and I've always appreciated that. So thank you. And thank you, Miguel, for your presentation as well. And does Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
I don't at this time.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Johnson?
Not at this time.
And I think I don't have any questions, clarifying questions at this time. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brand, I can, I can actually see him on the screen. Commissioner Brand, do you have any clarifying questions for staff?
Yeah, just a real quick, that's just to confirm that the only, we'll call it change from the previous meeting was that the elevation calculation is different? Is that, is that a fair assessment?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner.
If, if we were comparing the design review presented at the last meeting compared to this one, it looks as though the elevation highlight that you called out in the staff report is the only difference? Is that right?
Correct, yeah, just for the presentation portion, the plans themselves haven't changed or anything like that.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brand. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the Commission?
Good evening. Thank you. Aaron McAllister, Deputy Fire Chief. We do have the presentation teed up from the previous meeting, but I'll, I'll spare you unless you'd like us to run through that again. What I would like the Commission and the public to know is that we listened at the last meeting. We took that input, we went back, we scrubbed our information, we looked at our SEQA analysis, we provided some additional supporting documentation on our SEQA analysis. We went through all the questions that came up in public forum, questions from the Commission as well as questions from the public. I attempted to address each and every one of those questions in the letter that we submitted. And with that, we have the project team here tonight and we're happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Does the Planning Commission have any questions of the applicant?
I'll reserve mine for after public comment. I have quite a few.
Commissioner Johnson, any questions?
I'll wait until later.
And Vice Chair Brand?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, and I don't have any questions at this time. I do want to hear from the public as well. The city has received five public comments regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments would be made available on the city's website on the meeting information page.
At this time, I'll go to those that are here in the audience and then we'll go to Zoom. So if you'd like to speak in Zoom, please raise your hand now. Our first speaker is Roger Coxedge.
Good evening. First, I want to start by thanking everybody on the Planning Commission and at the city staff. Once again, April, thank you so much. You're absolutely fabulous. Eric, thank you so much. My last name is Coxedge, so I have the same sort of European last name. Council Crowell, thank you so much for your outstanding questions and intellect. Commissioners Roberts and Jones and Flor and Brand and Johnson. Hey Gerald, how you doing? And I want to thank engineering manager, Play, and of course Miguel. I know I'm going to eating up a whole minute doing that, but it's, it's a tremendous amount of work you do. And I just want to thank you so much for doing it. Just, just for a little history for people in the audience and at home. This project began multi-years ago. This project began multi-years ago and the project line is actually at 729 First Street on Lot 013091002. And in fact, actually takes up three lots. Lot number 013091018 was owned by the Diaz family, which Contra Costa Fire then used eminent domain to take and they folded it into Lot number 013091019. And then Confire went and annexed land from 751 First Street, Lot number 013091020, which is in fact land deeded to the veterans for, uh, perpetual use. Please correct me if I'm incorrect on any of this. So the, uh, Confire has taken a fair amount of land for this project and yet they want to go ahead and use it as an infill without providing any reports. And it's interesting that they don't want to. I can't speak for them because I'm not them. I'm, I'm just a short-bearded bald guy. But when you use land that is designated for veterans' use, veterans' use, most of them are disabled. I'm a disabled veteran myself. And that falls under the Americans Disabilities Act. And so if you're using any portion of land, it's now being improved upon, you have to do a complete ADA on, on it. And the ADA is not just parking, but it's the effects of what your new use for that land will be for the adjacent land of the land that you annexed and the land that's been annexed from. And I'm extremely looking forward to the complete report done by the applicant on how their engines coming in and out, what decibel level the engine sirens will be, what the alert decibels will be, the rumbling of the trucks and everything else will be. I'm not aware of that report. Perhaps it was in their letter. I'm sorry, I'm not very good at, uh, at computer stuff. So I wasn't able to find that particular letter for that report. But if the commission could be so kind as to ask the applicant that question, I would be most grateful. Because of course, making sure that all federal ADA and state ADA is complied with is very important. And again, I want to ask, uh, thank, uh, uh, Council Crowell from the March meeting for her very intelligent questions in regard to that. So once again, thank you and I'll let someone else get up and speak now. Thank you.
Paul Ratliff.
I'm here speaking today to express my concern regarding the application of the CEQA Class 32 infill exemption to the proposed Fire Station 94 project. After careful review of the exemption requirements and the circumstances surrounding this project, I respectfully submit that this project does not qualify for the exemption code and that a full CEQA review is warranted. One of the most critical points disqualifying this project from infill exemption is that the proposed fire station footprint required the acquisition and use of additional land from an addition, adjacent parcel owned by the Brentwood Veterans Memorial Building. This expansion demonstrates that the site at is, as it existed prior to the proposal was inadequate for the project's scope. The infill exemption is intended for projects that fit within existing, previously developed parcels. When a project must encroach on neighboring land to fit, especially land encumbered by legal and historical resemptions, this exemption no longer applies. Moreover, the adjacent land taken from the veterans' parcel is subject to special use restrictions tied to 1923 public tax authorization. This raises serious questions about whether the project is consistent with the city's general planning zone and violating Condition 1 of the exemption. Diablo Way is another issue that I have. This exemption requires also that the project be served by adequate infrastructure, which is Condition 5. However, Diablo Way, the alley that would serve as a major egress and ingress for emergency vehicles is not designed to accommodate the proposed apparatuses on a daily basis. The City of Brentwood Engineering Department states that Diablo Way was rebuilt in 2021 to Caltrans Level 5 specifications, which according to Caltrans, I called them personally, is rated for maximum weight of 19,000 pounds. A Type 1 standard fire engine, when loaded with water equipment and men, has a gross vehicle weight of 42,500 pounds. Type 2 and Type 3 engines, when loaded, exceed 26,000 pounds. According to the fire department, the use of Diablo Way by fire trucks eight to 10 times daily is not occasional. It is a primary use that will, uh, result in the accelerated degradation of the road. And we already have past history of a fire truck pulling out of there, going through the street and damaging water lines. That is history in this town. And by the way, that was the City of Brentwood and the citizens that paid for that. The fire department did not pull out their checkbook to repair that. It is disingenuous to claim that emergency vehicle exemptions under the California Vehicle Code excuse the district from the physical limi- limitations of road engineering. Fire trucks are not exempt from the laws of physics and this heavy daily use will impose a significant financial burden on the city to maintain and repair the structure. Furthermore, the ICF memorandum submitted in support of a CEQA exemption fails to provide substantial evidence that the exemption criteria are met. Their memo explicitly stated to be a desk review and not independent field analysis. It contained multiple qualifiers, such as based on information provided and appears consistent, which shows that this analysis was non-committal and contingent upon assumptions and not verified facts. The memo does not address the concerns regarding Diablo Ways, Ways weight limitations or the land encumbrances on the veterans' parcel. Thus, it cannot be relied upon as a subs- as a substitute for robust environmental review. Also, the downtown specific plan envisions a pedestrian-oriented community-centered district that represents architectural continuity and land use compatibility. The current fire station design is boxy, red brick structure that resembles an industrial facility, does not match the architecture of our downtown area. And it is completely out of character with the small-town charm that the council and the city is trying to maintain here. The DSP is the guiding legal document and this proposal fails both in aesthetics and placement. The planning commission has rightfully questioned how a project of this magnitude made it to design review phase under a questionable exemption. Despite the fire district's insistence that these concerns are inapt, their words, not mine, the commission has a duty to protect the public trust and-
The speaker's time has expired. Dan Duran.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your thoughtful service to Brentwood and for holding the line on what makes this city special. And this city is special. Tonight I want to talk about fit. That's because what this review is really about, not just measurements and materials, but whether this proposed fire station fits within the character and intent of the Brentwood downtown specific plan. We have seen renderings for the Fire Station 94. And let's be honest, it doesn't fit. The designer's hulking red brick mammoth that looks more at home in East Coast industrial area than in downtown Brentwood. It dominates the corner, sits hard on the street and disregards the charm and walkability that this commission has worked so hard to protect. Let me ask you this. You received a letter today, uh, showed that two parcels I'm going to speak of now, Station 94 with its rigid brick lines and overpowering mass, or Fire Station 36 in Danville, designed by A.C. Martin with its California Mission-style architecture, arch doorway, stucco walls, tile, red tile roof and human-scale elegance that blends with its community. And that's all we're asking, is that the fire station is needed. We're all aware of that. I personally, as a veteran, don't believe it belongs on First Street for numerous reasons, but we still need a fire station. But this architectural style does not fit downtown Brentwood. Doesn't fit at all. Commissioner Flore said it best, that downtown specific plan is a promise, a promise to the citizens of this wonderful city. Don't let outside agencies dump projects in our backyard just because they can. A promise that Brentwood will keep its character. Commissioner Brandt raised excellent questions about the design massing and Commissioner Roberts rightfully asked how such a project got this far with no serious impact. But what's more telling is this. Has the fire district responded to your concerns? Did they bring you a better design? No, they doubled down and that speaks volumes, ladies and gentlemen, volumes. The chief got up here and said that they've done studies and everything else, but living downtown Brentwood on Third Street, I have seen his fire trucks come down the street at specific times when traffic is at its lightest to make the turns that would be required downtown. Not when schools going down, not when people are going in and out, doing the shopping early in the morning, late in the afternoon. But very specifically, their trucks will park on the side of the road, wait for traffic to die down and then make the turn. I'm sorry. That doesn't fit, doesn't fit at all. And I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Danny Dorman.
I stand by what I said. Here's an example. Actually, I'll start with one that I'd love to have you, someone there, ask because I asked this of a city official and this person didn't know. I want to make sure I say it properly so then that way no one can sit there and go, huh? What? The Cortese list. Ask staff what that means with respect to exemptions. That is C-O-R-T-E-S-E, list. Now, going back to what I had said before about misinformation at all. On page 15, titled "No Unusual Circumstances pursuant to CEQA Guidelines 15300 dash 2." I'm comparing this now to CEQA categorical exemptions that is found on their website. The fourth exemption. Actually, no, the third. Ask, is there a reasonable possibility that the project will have an effect on the area due to environmental, um, concerns? Come on now. Traffic. Noise. I didn't see anything in any of the reports submitted by staff that actually addresses that, other than, I think there was a VTA. I think those are the initials. The National Vehicle Average, which doesn't even compare. And I had this issue with Bluebird once upon a time and that used with that other guy. God in heaven. That, all by itself. And to be clear, I'm not talking about Sand Creek or other logical places. This is design use. Contra Costa Fire, and by extension Diane Burgess, has had four bites at the apple to explain just this one thing. Why not have a CEQA? First it was, oh, grandfathered in. And I can't remember what the other three are. I know I heard somebody, I think it was the last time someone came up here and spoke, we don't need to do one, period, dot. Now, why would they make such a bold claim? Because staff, because Eric said they don't need to. This goes back to now what you guys are faced with. On CEQA, D, approval project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality. You guys can read what it means. But the other one that seems to be overlooked is, I believe it was on, yeah, there it is, line six, finally, the sixth exemption. Adverse change in significance to a historical resource. Are you friggin kidding me? Because here, it says, and I quote, exemption does not apply. I think a lot of vets would disagree with that, that one thing. Let's just have a CEQA, period.
Don Hester.
Sorry, that's a bit short for me. Commissioners, um, uh, chairperson and staff, thank you for, um, hearing us tonight. We want to talk and reiterate what Dan Duran spoke about earlier today. Before you, you see two pictures between two different fire district, uh, fire stations. One is the proposed 94, and this is their own drawings, and, uh, Fire Station 36, which is San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District. If you look at those two and you ask yourself, I want each and every one of you to ask yourself, including staff, which one of those looks like it belongs in downtown? Now, you've been asked to only render a decision based on design. So I'm only going to talk to you about design right now. Let's look at the design of these two buildings. Sorry, I know that Chief McAllister does not think that this is a big massive red monster, but it is clearly a big red monster. In fact, if you turned it on its side and painted it black, it looks like something from 2001, a space odyssey. It's monolithic, it's huge, it doesn't fit downtown. However, you know, if you had money like Danville, apparently, you can get this nice fire station like this. Will you look at that beautiful thing? Isn't that a piece of work? Doesn't that look like it belongs in California? Doesn't it look like it belongs in, uh, in agricultural area in Central Valley? Even in the Bay Area? And you look at the two, and I read the downtown specific plan and just as Chairperson Flore had brought up at the last meeting- which he brought up a number of issues about the design of this. I'm surprised that that was not one of the things that was commented on, um, in the response from the Deputy Fire Chief in his response. Um, he talked about a lot of other stuff that we talked about, which, you know, wasn't about the design, but let's go back to that design. Did they come back with any changes to the design whatsoever? The answer is no, right? So, look at those two things. Now, there, there's a little bit of a pattern here in the county, and I know that, I'll digress just a little bit on this one. You know, the, the Brentwood Veterans Hall has been fighting the encroachment of, uh, the fire station over the years. Over eighty-seven years, they've encroached four different times, increasing the footprint each time. Um, and Deputy Chief McAllister, with all due respect, says that that's not going to happen again. But that has happened four times in the last eighty-seven years. So that's about every twenty years-ish, twenty, twenty-five years. In between there, they keep on encroaching, and they say it's not going to happen again. So I don't know that I buy that. But when Lafayette had their Veterans Hall taken from them by the county to give it to the city of Lafayette, and the veterans complained, they got an eight-million-dollar, brand-new building. When the veterans here complain, we didn't get anything. We're getting stonewalled just like the city is. Just shut up, know your place, we're going to do what we're going to do, and we don't have to answer any of your questions, or we're just going to tell you, you don't, you shouldn't ask that question. I, with all due respect, as appointed officials, um, we expect you to defend us as the citizens. That is your role, not to just rubber stamp what staff says, or rubber stamp what the county tells you, or even what the state tells you. They're running roughshod over local government telling us how our community should be. We should not stand for that one bit at all. And again, here, Brentwood, you know, agricultural center, middle-class working folks. Do we get a nice, brand-new, shiny fire station that matches the downtown-specific plans, you know, design requirements? Or do we get this big red monster? There's that, that pattern, that these affluent, uh, communities are getting what they want. They're getting good designs, they're getting brand-new veterans halls. Brentwood, not for us, sorry. We just don't have the money, or we don't have the class, I'm not sure what it is. But the county just disregards us, as veterans were being disregarded, and as a city, and you commissioners, having asked questions, are now being disregarded. I would hope that you would take that into consideration and deliberation. And again, A or B, which one looks like it better fits Brentwood? Thank you.
Michael Clement. Michael Clement.
Good evening, Michael Clement. I'm a sixty-year resident of Brentwood. I managed that Veterans Hall for eighteen years. My family's been here since eighteen sixty-eight, so I want to make that very clear, that I'm a person of this community, along with my family and other veterans who've come and gone before me. I live in this community, I'm vested in this community, so what I say is very heartfelt. The only thing about the fire department and this new thing is that the word FD, Fire Department, that's it. Everything else is different. It's a monstrosity. It's something that does not complement the veterans' building. If that building goes up, you look at it, and it's a total disrespect to the veterans that have served in that building, that have left this community, that come back into that building and want to serve more. It doesn't even vaguely complement. You have this big building, the fire department, the new structure, that doesn't have the ability to grow. The community right now, again, is at sixty-five thousand, going to be built out at eighty thousand. If you have to get more trucks, if you have to get more ladders, more equipment, more personnel, does that fire department have the ability to grow with the community? I'm still waiting for the answer for that. But as we can see, uh, it's, it's, it's fallen on deaf ears. The people who are making the decisions about our little Brentwood town, the charm of Brentwood, people don't even live here. They come in here, they make all these changes, they want us to suck this up, swallow it whole, and they're not a part of this community. So when something goes bad, then we're the ones that have to reap what was done. We have to be the victims of what was built, and I can go on and on and on. Uh, and, and I just, I just think it's a terrible injustice. So the planning commission needs to look at this with a fine-tooth comb, ask all the questions, the questions that you ask, even if they're unfavorable, ask them. Have the courage, just like your veteran community had to leave this town to go serve in wars, and leave and come back to that Veterans Hall. You guys have the same responsibility to the veterans and to your community. We deserve it, Brentwood deserves it. Because without you guys asking those questions, it's just going to get rubber stamped. And for us to sit here and take that, later on, it's going to, you're really going to be able to measure how val, uh, how, uh, the valor of your, of your position. Same thing with, uh, the comments that were said before about having the city attorney look at both sides and present the argument in a clear, transparent way, and show everybody that this is a good spot for Brentwood. And if we have a concern, if we have something that we want an answer to, then everyone should be able to look at us in the eye and say that we did the do, the due diligence, and we have your answers. Here is the answer to your question, Mr. Clement. This is why we think it's a good fit. And then I will be standing on my, uh, where I sit, and I'll be listening to you, and I'll be able to make either the agreement or the dissent to those comments, because they're important to everyone. Remember, the veterans' community and the community of Brentwood are taking, uh, the baton and carrying it for the next generation. That is the people that are in kindergarten right now, that don't even know that they're going to live here in Brentwood, that don't even know that they're going to be veterans, that they're going to come back, and they're going to say, wow, why is this and this and this happening in a, in a bad way? We're the ones who are going to have to answer that, and guess what? No one is going to be here to answer those questions who made those decisions. So, I ask, I ask the, the planning commission to look back at that last meeting and look what was said, and those questions that everybody had before are the same ones we have now, sitting there in that veterans' building, and we have a funeral service, and those loud sirens go off. We just have to deal with that, that's just part of it? When one of our people go down, we got to sit there, and that's the way we're going to honor them? I don't think that's a good idea. When we have our disabled veterans walking from that parking lot across the alleyway, and we've got two fire trucks coming in, and oh, by the way, we have, uh, distribution and pickups from the local businesses there? We have to sit there and be victims to the fire traffic that go through there? When we have a beautiful place down there on Sand Creek Road that has the viewpoint, the overhead caution lights, and the big lot, and it's owned by the city, and you guys can sit there and say, here, we're selling it to the, uh, fire department so that they can go ahead and build their state-of-the-art, grow with the community, grow with the population, and be able to say, hey, welcome to Brentwood. This is what we have for your public safety. And I stand on that. God bless America, and God bless the veterans of Brentwood and the United States, and God bless the fire department.
Dolores Long.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and community members. I'm Dolores Long, American Legion Auxiliary President. And Michael Clement just led me into what I'm going to speak about tonight, which is to drawing your attention to the key point that has somehow been overlooked in this entire process in the city of Brentwood. We already have that shovel-ready, pre-approved location for a fire station. And yes, I'm talking about the property at Sand Creek. And Laura, originally designed as a future home of Fire Station Fifty-Four during the Barrington Project in two thousand and five. The location isn't just idea, it was studied, planned, and cleared. The planning commissioners approved it, and a CEQA review was given and completed at the time. The fire district's own documents referenced it as a designated replacement site. The groundwork is already done. The Sand Creek site sits on the west side of Brentwood, the city's growth corridor. At one of the meetings, I did hear, um, somebody from the fire department mention that the growth corridor was here in downtown, and I would disagree with that. When I am on the bypass, and I'm running into two and three times more traffic, I've lived here eighteen years, I know where the growth is coming from, and when I take a look across to the east and the west, it depends upon where you're at, at the time, I see the growth over here, Sand Creek area. That's where response times will soon matter most. And yet, here we are, being told that the only options to cram a much larger, louder fire station into a constrained downtown footprint adjacent to the veterans' memorial building, small businesses, and pedestrian activity. That's not planning, I would call that reaction. Reaction to what's given you, planning commissioners, on what fire department and county would like to see happen. And the result is conflict, public distrust, I think we're hearing it tonight. I think we've heard it for the last couple of months, and lost confidence in our process. We've asked the city council to consider offering the Sand Creek property to the fire district. We would urge the commissioners to support that as well. You can even recommend that the planning staff fast-track any permitting, any permitting since the, uh, groundwork has already been laid. This is a real solution, not just a protest. I know that the planning commission is limited in scope during design review, but you also know what your planning looks like when you see it. This is an opportunity to stand with the veterans, to stand with your community, to stand with your downtown businesses, and the residents of Brentwood. To say we can do better, and we already have a better location waiting. Let's stop trying to jam a square peg into a round hole when the round hole already exists, ready and waiting at Sand Creek. Remember, yes to the station, no to the location. Thank you.
Mike Miyakovich.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Miyakovich. I'm the junior vice commander, the VFW Brooke Post Ten Seven Eight Nine. Thank you for your continued attention and thoughtful questions on the proposed Fire Station Ninety-Four. I rise tonight to speak not just as a concerned resident, but as a veteran, and to emphasize that veterans and the city of Brentwood have a shared interest in ensuring that the county does not steamroll our community or sidestep important legal protections. We raise serious concerns regarding the Military and Veterans Code twelve-sixty-six and the Revenue and Tax Code seven-two-eight-five dot five, both of which place limitations on the use of land purchased with taxpayer funds specifically for veterans' memorials and meeting hall purposes. The property in question was acquired in nineteen twenty-three under these legal provisions. To repurpose it for a fire station without formal proceedings, compensation, or legal remedy, it's just not impro, it's just improper. It's unlawful. We have brought this to the county's attention, they cannot claim ignorance. We contest the legality of this land transfer. It was not adjudicated, it was not negotiated, it was simply taken. That kind of overreach should alarm every local official in this room, especially given Brentwood ongoing efforts to preserve the autonomy of this, of outside influence to the, to the city. Now we talk about CEQA, infill exemption being used to avoid an environmental review. This exemption is meant for projects that fill in gaps within an existing developed area, not for projects that must take land from an adjacent parcel to accommodate their size, not for projects that override dedicated land use, and not for projects that expand the footprint beyond the scope of that previously was there, especially when they double the building size and introduce new elements such as massive backup generators and significant increase in vehicle activity. The county use of this infill exemption is legally questionable and ethically reckless. We are not oppose, not opposing firefighters. We are supporting veterans' rights and upholding the rule of law in which we took an oath to defend, and you as well. This isn't a veterans versus fire safety. This is a Brentwood versus county and fire district overreach. This commission must stand firm, because if you don't, who will? Thank you for your time.
Matt R. Matt R.
Good evening, councilmembers, or, excuse me, should, commissioners. My name is Matt, I'm a third-generation Navy veteran. I so graciously was able to take over for Mr. Clement after he spent his twenty years almost in that building. A lot of those times, I worked with him. I've been living in this area myself for about thirty. I've made, I have attended multiple events through my lifetime, myself, in our building. I'm not really here to talk about CEQUAs, the way the building looks, sway, or anything like that, because in reality, we all know that it should not be here, be next to our building, to begin with. Not only for the fact that it is a disadvantage to all of our veterans who are there now, and who will come in the future. It also has a disadvantage to our community who uses that building about three times, three times more often than the veterans that we have that are in there for their meetings. By this, I'm saying, for, for example, foot traffic. All around it for the farmer's market, might have, be able to have the farmer's market there down the street anymore. Oh, yeah, maybe the county fire is saying, yeah, you will. Well, think about it this way, how are you going to have everybody walking back and forth through the street or across the street, going down to a blocked off-road, and now there's a fire? How do they get out? Who knows? Oh, yeah, one other thing, the city so graciously let us have a Veterans Day parade, the first time that I can remember in my lifetime here, blocked the street off. Where did that fight, where did that parade end? In front of our building. What did it block off? The extra land that they're trying to put a fire station in. Will that mean, can we have that end where it's supposed to end, or even downtown at all anymore? Probably not. My building has been there for a hundred years. Yes, I say it's mine, and it's all of ours. It should be left alone, and I know I'm swinging for the fences here. The land at the fire station was on, was ours to begin with. It should be given back to us instead of the fire station so we can continue to serve the community members themselves how the best way that they need to be fed and served. Thank you.
Vince Wells. Vince Wells.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Vince Wells, president of firefighters Contra Costa County Local Twelve Thirty, uh, representative of the firefighters who serve, uh, the community of Brentwood. I, I know that this commission's been assigned to look at the design review, but there's some, based on the comments that were he brought up here, I feel like maybe I got to bring up a few more items to why this is important, um, to us. Brentwood was previously served by the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District, which was annexed into Contra Costa Fire to improve emergency services across the region. Along with the passage of Measure X, that annexation gave us the resources to finally bring the staffing and infrastructure in Brentwood, infrastructure to Brentwood that has long been needed. That includes reopening the downtown fire station, because that station was closed and tore down with the expectation from us and our membership that it would be rebuilt. The downtown station is not a new project, as I've stated. It's a rebuilt on a site that has long served as a fire station. The project has been deemed exempt from additional environmental review because of the existing use. We followed every required step, and we are ready, or the fire district is ready to move forward. The crew has been hired, and they graduate, actually, on the sixteenth. And you're welcome to show up, that's going to be at the, um, Lester Center in Wana Creek on the sixteen. They are ready to serve the public and of Brentwood. The lay in this project or pushing it to a new location would restart a multi-year process. would restart a multi-year process. It would come at real financial cost. Every delay increases the burden on taxpayers. Building materials are more expensive. Labor costs are climbing, and newly imposed tariffs are driving our costs further. These are Measure X dollars. They were approved by the public to improve service, not to be spent on delays and cost overruns. The station is a critical piece of Brentwood's fire service future. It will directly improve emergency response times and reduce the strain on the rest of the district. The land, it means fewer resources for Brentwood and a broader impact on the safety of the district wide. When I first started out here as a labor rep, actually, prior to the annexation, you had three fire stations serving 250 square miles. That was one station in Brentwood, one in Discovery Bay, and one in Oakley. By the annexation and the Measure X, the plan is to reopen the downtown station, build another station. We've got a truck company that you never had. You never had an apparatus that can reach the top of this building. All of those were implemented and put in place with the annexation. So now, to where we have the money, we have already done all the work to start the project, to start rebuilding that station. And now we're arguing over the location. And like I said, from our perspective, our membership, we always, I don't know where the ship change came, but we always thought, we're rebuilding Station 54 at the time and 94. So this is kind of coming up. We support the veterans. We do not support pushing them out of their building. We would never support that. And we support whatever efforts we can make to help accommodate the veterans, but we're not willing to back off on that station location. We respond. I've worked at three stations that were in communities across from parks. We know how to maneuver and work our way through parades, and we're not going to blast sirens and all the things that are being accused in some of these public comments. We do know how to work in our communities, in our members, our community, that, committed to that, and we're committed to citizens in the community of Brentwood and all the fire agencies within our jurisdiction. So I thank you for your time.
Anthony Stevens.
Good evening, commission. My name is Anthony Stevens, one of the vice presidents for Contra Costa County Firefighters Local 1230, representing the members that serve the East Contra Costa area. Local 1230 and our firefighters have got a longstanding, good relationship with Brentwood, VFW, and all the vets. I'm not here to speak on the details of the project or the CEQUAs or some of the fine aesthetic points that have been made. I have faith in those working on this project on behalf of the fire district. Our primary interest relies on the safety of the community and our members. I've ran calls here. I know how long it takes to get from the Ball Forest Station all the way to here to downtown Brentwood, and the impacts that that can have. I have family right here downtown Brentwood. You know, not only from the fire service perspective of running fire calls, but the time it takes to get to the emergency medicals as well. We are in an outlining area of the county. We don't have any emergency departments right here in Brentwood. The closest ones are in Antioch. And with the annexation, not only did we go from nine firefighters on duty a day out of three stations covering 249 square miles in some of the busiest companies here in the county, and protecting the waterways and all the wildland area out here, we also brought paramedic services, advanced life support, immediately to the community, which, for those that don't know, are paramedic services and the advanced cardiac, heart monitors and drugs and innovation and all the things that the ambulance can do to stabilize and get you to the hospital. It's vital to have stations properly located to provide timely responses to the community, for the safety of the community and for the safety of our firefighters. Like President Wells said, we have new firefighters graduating shortly to help increase staffing here in Brentwood. Bringing East Contra Costa from nine firefighters out of three stations just a few years ago to 19 firefighters out of five stations with ALS services. I think it's also important to understand what it takes to respond to a call. Speaking of fire in particular, it takes five fire engine companies, truck company, two battalion chiefs, and a safety officer. And we're relying on those companies coming from some of the busiest firehouses in the county. We're relying on Oakley being available, Antioch being available. So there is an importance of having properly located stations for the response times. I can appreciate the comments that have been given about the traffic. On that same note, it gives us a little bit of opportunity to not fight the traffic from the outside coming in and being already kind of on the inside and hopefully being able to provide services a little bit sooner. I know the impacts it's all on this project. And stalling this will continue to put our members and the community at an unnecessary risk. We're speaking tonight on the importance of just the locations and the safety that this provides the community and our members. It's not a vet versus firefighter, firefighter versus vet thing. We're looking forward to being able to continue to serve the community to the best of our abilities, provide the safest environment for our firefighters and assistance sooner than later from those long travel distances, and hopefully be good neighbors and continue supporting the vets here in the future. And like President Wells said, are committed to helping assist with whatever we can from our end. So appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, I have no other speaker cards. Anyone else like to speak, sir? Thank you. Travis Martin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Travis Martin, commander, local VFW Post 10789. I didn't have the foresight to sit down and rewrite a bunch of things, because I wanted to hear what everyone had to say and either reinforce or fill in blanks. And I have read soup to nuts, the fire district's response that was sent to the city. And every response was couched in the same empty, unsubstantiated lines with a specific flavor of "you're wrong." Here's a few numbers. Contra Costa County has a residency of roughly 1.1 million residents. 84,000 of them, these are from census data, are active-duty and veterans that currently reside in this county. The East Contra Costa vets alone account for nearly 8,600 of them, whether they are active members of VSOs or whether they are simply eligible for any of our VSOs. The Brentwood Veterans Memorial Building, the Hall, as we belovedly call it, is three VSOs, three auxiliaries, and represents over 1,000 members of East Contra Costa, the majority of which reside inside of Brentwood proper. That, that is why we are so hard about this. In terms of the previous fire buildings that were there, the deputy fire chief states that we all lived there, coexisted for decades, seemingly happy, as is my assertion from the way it was written. Well, that would be wrong, because we had conflicts, some of them significant, with our neighbors. As much as I appreciate the assertion and the assurances that we'll have good neighbors should this project go through, fact is, we are in a position where we had had multiple times where the county had to come in and mediate issues. So good fences make for good neighbors, and we didn't always have fences. So to that, there are thousands in need of the services that we provide at that building, on that property. We need more property. Our numbers don't even represent the scope of what that need represents. We have existed over a decade without a firehouse on that property. And in that time, the building was converted and used as storage, not a firehouse, as the CEQA exemption states. It was storage. What the reasons are are irrelevant. They decided that that building was no longer suitable as a fire station, and they decommissioned it, and they turned it into a storage facility. So our assertion on that point is clear. That is not a firehouse that existed for a CEQA exemption. It is a storage facility that we could be put to great use, because we need storage. So we've heard some comments directed that the delay of this project will cost taxpayers money. And let's be clear, that cost is the result of poor planning on the part of the fire district. That is not the community concerns of the veterans that you've heard here over these last months as we beg for the opportunity to be heard by some organization that will take the time to listen to us. Public safety is important, and that is a fact. We all agree on that 100%. But it is not giving the district a blank check to bypass accountability, proper process, or Brentwood's local planning values. How dare they are using public safety as the crudle with which they leverage this into? Transparency and respect for the community that they purport to want to serve should be first and foremost in their mind in how they serve it. That is not the veterans' fault. It is not the planning commission's fault. Last thought I'd like to leave you with is I was in Chicago a couple of days ago, just last week, and I rolled around and found five fire stations, all beautiful brick buildings, none of which represented the giant brick monster.
We have one more speaker here in the audience, and then we'll go to Zoom. So if you'd like to speak in Zoom, please raise your hand.
Hi, my name is Mike, and I'm a resident of Brentwood for almost 25 years. I want to echo what Travis just said. Thank you. Every time I hear one of the heads of our fire union come up and say, "We desperately need this fire station because we're putting people's lives at risk," I throw up in my mouth a little bit. It's disgusting. There are other areas here in Brentwood already earmarked to put in fire stations, but you're picking this location, the most contentious and controversial location. Every day that we come here, every week, you are putting Brentwood residents at risk, not us. So thank you, Travis. I appreciate it. Vince Wells, I'd like to address him over there. Because full transparency, he is the president.
Mike.
He is the one.
Mike.
Listen, listen. Then I'll say, then I'll say. He is the one that said, "Us firefighters, we deserve our home away from home." That's what he said the last time he was up here. What about our veterans' home? This isn't just their home away from home. This is their home. So take that in mind. And then also, I'd like to, just for everyone here in the audience, also, look, I appreciate the veterans coming up and speaking, I do. I appreciate when Brentwood residents come up and speak. But also, Commissioner Johnson, I would assume that you would pay some respect to the veterans. You've had your head down. I don't know what you're reading. But as soon as the fire union and their reps come up, you pay full attention. And full disclosure again, it is the fire union that funded Commissioner Johnson's failed attempt to run for mayor, contributing to his campaign. That's the dude over there that probably writes the checks and has been trying to infect our local politics here for
Mr. Clement, you're not allowed to point it. Just for a matter of order, we do not address other people in the audience from the podium. Just talk to us. Thank you.
Chair, present floor, we're going to go to Zoom now, unless someone else would like to speak in the chambers respectfully. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Ian.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ian.
I want to start off and say thank you so much to city staff and commissioners. You guys are the better in Brentwood. You guys make sure you are within your line, and you are doing the best job possible, especially the city attorney in her office. Not some local blogger, not even a journalist, who claims you guys are out of line, which in a journalistic article, you don't state your opinion unless it's an editorial. If it's a fact-based article, you state the facts, which you guys are not out of line, because the city attorney will shut you down if you were out of line. You guys are protecting the citizens. Which this fire department, what are you guys? A political organization? Oh, my God. I trust you guys, I respect you guys, because you guys have saved my grandfather's life a few times, especially about two weekends ago. But right now, you guys are pissing me off as a resident of Contra Costa County. Stop playing politics with the city of Brentwood. We don't want your fire station in this location. We want it on Sand Creek Road. A speaker brought up a great point about that alleyway. I would love to know, will this fire engine damage that beautiful alleyway that I, the taxpayer, paid for? Because if you, Contra Costa Fire, will damage our city infrastructure, you better damn well pay if your guys is no money, especially those unions. The Brentwood taxpayer does not want to pay more for you guys through our city general fund if you're going to come in and damage our pipe. Which I hope the planning commission, if it's in your scope, you will review and consider this. The Sand Creek location seems so much better if that is where all of the new population is coming. That Sand Creek corridor desperately needs help. And one of the former closed stations is over there in Nixson. Sand Creek Road gives you faster access to Nixson than wherever the downtown bull crap is. Excuse my language is here, but that's how frustrated I am getting with this project. And to the union reps, you guys, I'm a union rep myself. I'm not trying to address them, but to the commission, don't listen to them. They're trying to just push this agenda further that we desperately need services. We already have the services we need from this annexation. We are not crying for help right now. Unless we want to build an AMR base in Brentwood, that's the help we need. We need more ambulances, not more fire trucks right now. Contra Costa Fire can take the time and focus their energy on the Lone Tree Project and hopefully build the Sand Creek Project. There is so much more I could say, but honestly, my brain is flaky just from the pure politics that this fire department wants to play with us. And one last thing, the fire department posted that their station is coming in fall 2026. You don't open your mouth until you have approval. And I'm sure you guys, the planning commission, will probably humble the fire department from even opening their mouth before their chickens have hatched. Thank you to the commission again and to city staff for doing the amazing job you're doing. And don't listen to bloggers or to the politics of the fire department who one of their fire commissioners ran against our current city councilwoman and did a smear campaign against her and paid that local blogger off with ads. Thank you.
Next, we have Marisol Vias.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I'm not able to be there in person. I just wanted to ask the planning commissioners to please deny this project. I think you have everything that you need to be able to deny it. I think last time when you brought things up, it was, there was no need to continue it. Just don't approve it. I think we're all in agreement, at least the residents are. Maybe not the union or the special interests, but the actual residents of Brentwood are speaking up and asking you to please deny this project. Put the fire station in a different location. I'm sure special interests and unions are saying many things, but the residents are not comfortable with this. And I think you guys have a duty to the city, to the residents, and looking at everything. And, you know, I'm really disappointed in Diane Burgess. I'm disappointed that she would push this. I'm disappointed in the union and the special interest money that's funneling into this. So I'm hoping that you all can please take a look and do what's right for what the residents are asking of you. We are not special interests. We are residents. Yes to a station, but no to this location. Thank you. Yes to a station, but no to this location. Thank you.
At this time, chairperson, we have no other speakers.
Thank you, April. And again, I just want to remind everybody in the public that comments should be addressed to the commission, and there shouldn't be any crosstalk. We don't have that here. We don't want to be having a lot of issues in the audience. We just want to be able to have a nice meeting. And yeah, that's about what I have to say about that. All right. All right, got two glasses on, a little blustered. Okay, I will now close public comment. Is there any discussion?
Commissioner, we need to make sure you unmute your mic. And through the chair, I'm not sure if you wanted to come back and see if your commissioners had any questions of the applicant because they reserved some time for that.
That's a good point. Does anybody have any additional questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Vice Chair Brand?
No questions here.
All right. Thank you. I'll now close public comment. There's no need for a motion on that. Okay, discussion by the commission.
Okay, well, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, first, I want to thank the veterans for your service. Let me put that out there. I'm not adverse to fire stations. I want to put that out there as well. What I am going to talk about, and I'm trying to, I'm going to educate the residents right about now, is compliance and safety. ISO, Insurance Service Office. What I'm speaking to you about now, you can look up on your own. But it's important that you have everything you need, because we do, on other things that are not being discussed. And this needs to be discussed because it was brought up. Insurance Service Office is a provider of statistical actuarial underwriting and claims. It's a global provider that helps the insurance industry to accurately determine risk in order to price policies. They support reinsurers, third-party administrators, agents, brokers, regulators, risk managers. It's an independent organization, and it provides data to develop insurance programs to assist insurance companies in meeting state regulatory requirements. ISO provides a score, often called ISO rating, to homeowners' insurance companies. The more well-equipped our fire department is to put out a fire, the less likely your house will burn down. In addition, ISO influences property insurance premiums, including fire department response times, staffing, and water. Specifically, ISO uses NFA, NFPA, which is the National Protection, Fire Protection Association standards for fire departments' response times in its fire suppression rating schedules. Longer response times can negatively impact the department's ISO ratings and potentially increase insurance costs for residents and business owners. I cannot in good conscience support the placement of this fire station with the inevitable, an additional 3,000 students and a tight downtown community on the other side. But let's just say that, although it's been confirmed, and I checked that out, that they weren't going to add on to that high school. And let's just leave it at 3,000, which is the population over there at Liberty. I don't know about you, but anytime that you're going down that street, parents are picking up their kids. I'm talking about compliance now. The fire department cannot deem when a fire alarm is going to go off. And unless they plan on running over vehicles, which I doubt seriously they would do, response times are going to be affected. In this report that was submitted by the fire department in our packet, which I found to be a little biased, it didn't answer anything specific. Words like "low" was used as a descriptive. And I'm trying to figure out what that means. It's on page, packet page 13, "Low Potential." Low potential to what? It contradicts, because I had the pleasure of speaking with the chief battalion over here on Balfour, who communicated that they build out. When they build, they plan on building with expansion in mind. But this report says something completely different. The location, as far as I'm concerned, is not zoned accurately. We simply asked for specifics in order to make a decision up here. And being bullied or threatened, which is how I took that document, doesn't work for me. Does not work for me. We're a body, a governing body, that is here representing the residents, I being one of them, in making good decisions. And without information, we will not rubber, I will not rubber stamp anything that comes before me. Won't happen, not on my watch. I will not be bullied, and I will not be threatened. So that being said, I'm concerned about how many applications were in the hopper awaiting to come before the planning commission, that this jumped up and came before us again without the information we asked. It's offensive to me. And as far as I'm concerned, until I get the answers that I was looking for, I cannot, in good conscience, speak on this. Absolutely not. Decisions are made. I could not tell the fire department how much water they should put in their tank. And they cannot tell this planning commission what it is that we need to do regardless. That's not there. That is not something that they can do up here. So that being said, there's more that I want to talk about, but I'm going to take a deep breath, and I'll pass the mic back to the chair. But I want to be very clear about something. This report, and I was not asking, I don't think that our ask was inappropriate. I don't think our ask was something that could not be answered. It should have been answered. And the fact that it wasn't speaks volumes about the intention here. I'm concerned about the infill exemption. It's very subjective. And I want to know, and I guess I can ask this of Mr. Noltenis, because it was brought up. I'm bringing up things that were brought up. How many sites were considered before this site?
So you're talking about how many different locations for a new station were considered?
Yes.
Before the district settled on this one?
Yes.
I have no idea. I mean, the one that's referenced on Sand Creek was at one time thought to be a replacement or a relocation for the downtown station. But to my knowledge, over the last, say, year or so, when the district first contacted staff, they had settled on this one already. So that might be a better question for the district, actually. I'm not aware of one that was. I'll tell you this, staff did not see one or evaluate a different one than the downtown one.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
And I ask because I did get a chance to speak to someone that was running the city council, who's a fire person, who communicated to me that there was a fire station that was being considered and was ultimately suspended because the soil was bad. And I'm wondering what the cost was to the taxpayers on that. I want to reiterate that the delay does not belong to the residents. The delay does not belong to the veterans. I happen to agree with something that was said earlier, that the delay belongs in the planning and the options that should have been considered that were not. That's where the delay is. And I yield back to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Pass to your Roberts.
Commissioner Johnson? Sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Plour. I wanted to see if I could just clarify a little bit for Commissioner Roberts' question. So about around 2023, mid-2023, the fire district did submit two conceptual, not even applications, just really conceptual projects, one of which was Station 94, and the other was the station that you're referencing, which were both two stations separate from each other. And I believe that they both started doing studies for both of them. And the one at the other location, I believe it was off of, around Shady Willow area, the site was actually found to be contaminated. So they didn't continue with that. But like I said, these two stations were independent of each other. And the applicant could clarify that for you.
I appreciate that. I needed that. And what was the cost to the taxpayers on the study?
I wouldn't know. The city did not conduct that CEQA study. That was the fire district.
Oh, there was a CEQA study.
For that one, yes, because the site was larger than five acres, which kicked it out of the infill exemption.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, first, I want to just say I'm really disappointed that we got to this point again, that, you know, it should have never got to this. This should never really have happened this way. It's just disappointing that we got this far down this road and with no solution in sight that would meet the fire department's needs and satisfy the veterans that they were heard. Sorry that that happened. But I wanted, I took some notes about some of the comments that were made, so I wanted to kind of make sure I got these answers. So first, the CEQA infill development, the additional land. Somebody mentioned additional land that would avoided the infill exemption. Can somebody answer that question for me?
So the infill exemption itself does not have any provisions saying that land can't be acquired. Other exemptions do have certain provisions, but not that specific infill exemption.
So nothing with the additional land that was mentioned? Like if you take additional land, if you take additional land, that would cause a problem with the infill exemption?
Correct. There's, like I said, there's other exemptions that do have qualifiers like that, but not infill specifically. Similar to how one of the comments has come up is that the stations are different sizes. The previous station was smaller than the currently proposed station. And if the applicants were trying to use a rebuilt exemption, that would certainly kick it out of, at least in my opinion, that would certainly kick it out from that exemption. However, the infill exemption doesn't take into consideration square footage differences. You know, infill exemptions applies to even undeveloped lots, for example. So it doesn't have those considerations for square footage.
One of, a couple of other questions. On ADA, it was mentioned, you know, we have an ADA study. Make sure in the ADA noise requirements and that type of thing, that, how, can you explain to me how that doesn't apply here?
So under CEQA, there's no provisions that require ADA studies. All projects are required to comply with the Building Code's ADA requirements. However, CEQA does not call for any specific ADA studies. And city council, if you could correct me if I'm correct?
That's correct.
Diablo Way, the road, and I know we talked about this last time, and the weight of the trucks, 19,000 pounds versus, at least that. Can you just reiterate, so I understand and the public understands, what the roads can support?
Thank you, Commissioner. So the Diablo Way is designed for supporting minor residential road traffic where it is considered like a normal residential street with a traffic index of five, which means there is four inches of asphalt concrete over eight inches of AB. So this type of roadway is able to support the normal minor residential traffic for the design year of the pavement. So the rehabilitation happened two years back, that is in 2022. So arguably, it should support another 15 years for design life.
Specifically, I'm talking about the weights of the truck, and I guess 40,000 pounds or can it support that? What would the, what?
Yeah, so the design is based on equal and single axle loads, meaning all the truck loads are transferred into eels. It's a technical term, and that's how the traffic index is actually figured out. So it doesn't matter what the weight of the truck is because there is always delivery trucks, fire trucks. And, but it's a number of loads that the pavement can accommodate. So it doesn't matter the weight of the truck, but as long as the pavement is designed according to standards, it should be able to accommodate it.
So you're saying, you're saying that it's not the individual weight of the truck?
Correct.
But it's the amount of weight that goes over time?
Exactly.
Okay. Just, I guess this might be a Ms. Crowell-type question. So right now, this is proposed for the fire department downtown. Our responsibility on this Sand Creek location, what is, how does our responsibility with like the Sand Creek location, you know, that everybody's saying, hey, we can go to that? What is, how, what can the commission do?
So as Eric kind of mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of Miguel's staff report, the city doesn't direct where the fire district or the county situates its projects. We just process the application as it comes to us. So the city doesn't have a role in selecting the site for the fire station. We just process their design review applications as they come in.
Okay. I guess I have one, I don't know if I can have one question for the applicant, but is that, how do we do this?
The applicant still has time. Can we call them back?
Yeah, and what I would say, you certainly gave the applicant an opportunity to speak at the close of public comment. But to the extent that commission has clarifying questions during deliberation, I think it's fine to call the applicant back up and do that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is just really quick on like things like events downtown, farmer's market. Knowing that those things are gonna, or would like to continue to happen in the city, how would the fire department handle that type of situation?
The fire district historically participated in downtown events from that location.
The Fire District historically participated in downtown events from that location, and I put it in writing, that we expect to continue participating in a cooperative way with events downtown with that fire station.
Okay, that was my-
I pledged full cooperation of the Fire District with downtown events.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions.
Vice Chair Brand.
Thank you, Chair Flor. I wanted to start, we've had a lot of comments here this evening, and I do appreciate the input from the community as well as our commission. A couple of things I noticed, at least in the staff report initially. When we started talking about the use, you know, this was a discussion that came up during the first meeting, you know, primarily from myself regarding, you know, compatibility with the downtown specific plan. And in looking at, I know Mr. Contreras had a great, I'll call it rebuttal for lack of a better term, with respect to my comments on the requirement for a conditional use permit. I did want to get into the specifics of this because I'm, in looking at a number of the fire stations in the, we'll call it greater East County region, one of the things that we see is that there are a number of, I'll call it accessory equipment that falls on the property in the, you know, I'll call it general vicinity of the actual structure itself, the primary fire station structure. And what we see is typically, this is supportive equipment. And in this case, with respect to Fire Station 94's design review, we see that there is a generator on the sort of northwest corner, I believe, as well as a, you know, supplemental fuel tank, as well as a PG&E transformer, these types of accompanying equipment. Now, most of these, if I understand correctly, adhere to the NFPA 110 standard, similar to what Commissioner Roberts had commented on in terms of those NFPA standards, many of which are listed in the actual staff report. But 110 specifically references emergency power backup as being a sort of a primary component to sustain power in the event of an outage or some type of purposeful grid bring down. I noticed that the fuel tank can sustain about 316 gallons of diesel. I'm not entirely sure in terms of how that capacity relates to sustained energy production, but given, call it a nine, 10, 11 liter diesel engine, you're probably running 13, 14 gallons an hour. You're talking like 24 hours of sustained electricity, which makes sense for a facility of this nature. I'm, I'm genuinely curious here as far as what is the legal requirement that the fire station is needed to sustain backup power? Is there some type of standard right now in which this facility has to sustain itself as being running in the event that there's a flood and we have a power outage? Or, you know, PG&E has to bring down the grid for some reason in our region, which is not unusual to us. I think we've all encountered a power outage, at least in the last year in Brentwood. I'm not sure who's equipped to answer this type of question in the chambers as of right now. Maybe, maybe we could start there, and I've got a few follow-ups.
I'll take a step.
I think, yeah, well, Miguel, if you want to start, but I think that's, the Fire District would be best equipped to explain, you know, its requirements if you want to defer to them.
That's exactly, I was gonna defer to the district then.
Yeah, if the applicant would like to answer, yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Michael Ross, architect for the project. I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight. I understand that they are closely held and deeply felt. Relative to the issue of emergency generators, California fire stations are designed to the Essential Facilities Act that require it to, all facilities to remain operational after a major earthquake. And part of the operational nature of an earthquake, or excuse me, of, of a fire station is to provide uninterrupted service and receive alarm calls and respond to them, and it needs power to do that. NFPA 110, as well as NFPA 1221, which is about dispatch centers that serve fire stations, all require the need for backup power. And our firm, DLR Group, designs fire stations all over. We've never designed a fire station without an emergency generator. I consider it one of the core pieces of infrastructure necessary for every essential facility in California. And we've all gone through the wildfires and the shutdown of power and things like that. It is a common sense, essential thing to do.
That answers my question well. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, so just continuing this point, the term, oh, sorry, the phrase, it's a core piece of infrastructure with respect to the fire station in terms of sustaining energy during some type of natural disaster or something of that nature. Where my mind goes with that being a core aspect of infrastructure means that the fire station effectively extends to the west edge of this ground floor property. Now, what, if, my logic tells me is that without that infrastructure, you cannot have a fire station legally. And so from my perspective, if we're looking at the measurement and the width of the building, similar to what I had described in the last meeting, is that it doesn't, it essentially extends all the way to Diablo Way, almost all the way to the outside edge where the, the barrier of that particular, what do you call that, the generator lands against the wall that opens for the, the parking lot adjacent to it. So from my perspective, that means that it is outside of that range, which means we do have on the ground floor, infrastructure that is absolutely necessary for the function and legal operation of a fire station on the ground floor that extends beyond that. And therefore, we need some kind of conditional use permit as, as per the downtown specific plan. I'd like to move on briefly to the parking requirement. Now, in the staff report, it is mentioned that there is a, I believe it was a zero minimum requirement for parking. And Mr. Contreras, I, I hope you can clarify, that's for onsite parking, is that correct?
Correct, correct. Off-street parking.
Oh, so I'm sorry, you must have misheard it. I said onsite parking, or is it off-street? I'm sorry.
It's synonymous. On-street, onsite and off-street are the same thing. Sorry.
This is synonymous. Okay.
Yeah.
When, when I did a detailed secondary at this point, a review of the DSP, downtown specific plan, for civic and cultural uses, the minimum requirement is essentially, as, I'll just read it here, is as determined by city through the design review process. Now, my, the way I interpret that as of right now is that the design review process is what we're talking about right now. So to me, that should be, at least in the staff report, makes sense to be like an NA or maybe even a TBD? Question mark, because it sounds, and I could be interpreting this wrong, maybe Christie has some comments here too, but that, it sounds like it's basically at the discretion of the design review process, whether through the commission or through the design review subcommittee. Is that, I don't know if I'm off basis here, but that, that's how I interpret it.
So staff, the way we interpreted it is as described in the, in the staff report. The parking calculations for the downtown specific plan state that non-residential uses have a zero max requirement for parking.
Non-zero max, as in there's no requirement for non-residential?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to follow this going into the, a bit more of the design aspects here. We do have an itemized list of requirements with respect to essentially parking regions within the DSP. And I'll read a few of them here. All parking areas should be planted and landscaped. They should be designed with convenient, safe and efficient pedestrian connections to building entry areas and other pedestrian routes. I'm looking at the plans right now, and I see zero vegetation adjacent to the parking lot. It within, once you get inside the barrier, there's no, there's no plants or anything. Surface parking lots shall be buffered, shall be buffered from adjacent development and landscaped with trees. Now, this particular design specifically highlights in, in, I forget which page it is, apologies, but it specifically references that there are zero trees in this parking lot. That is, you know, obviously it's for onsite staff use only, but there are no trees. And if you look at the lots adjacent to it, to the west, closer to Brentwood Boulevard, you see trees lined all the way, the, the parking lot in front of La Costa, you see all trees lined on all sides, very consistent. I think this, that's my understanding based off of what I believe is the original intention of that document. This is so that when we see these lovely parking lots that are in short demand, if, as we all know in downtown, is that we love the trees because they help shade us. You know, they talk about in order to provide shade and add trees to the downtown, trees shall be planted in surface parking lots to subdivide continuous rows of parking stalls at a minimum spacing of one tree every three spaces. I mean, I can go on here, but essentially, we have this bare parking lot that has no vegetation. You know, we've got the bioretention basin on the left side, but there's no trees in the parking lot. And yet, the public's not going to see it because it's a, it's an onsite staff-only parking lot, but it is a parking lot. So I, I have a hard time digesting the idea that we're making an exception without calling it out specifically in the, in the staff report. I wanted to also reference another conditionally permitted use that I think is being overlooked here. The ground floor also contains basically an exercise gym, which is a specific itemized requirement for a cup in the, in the downtown core area. Now, they're not taking dues, they're not taking, it's not public, it's, it's clearly only for onsite. But I guess, I wonder, it's, it seems very wiggle roomy as far as, it, it's a defined use within the actual design itself. And so to me at least, you have a, you have a, an exercise gym on the ground floor, effectively, that is for that particular use. And so I see that as another indication that we need some type of review of that in terms of its compliance. Now, as I go a bit further, we get into the stuff about the upper level. Like, you know, we have that permitted use on the, on the upper level, and almost every single one of them is related to some type of, we'll call it lodging. And it's, you know, hostels, hotels, any type of overnight stay. Now, this document, as far as the design reviews goes, does define it as being essentially living quarters. But they don't accept a fee, they don't accept, but I don't know how to negotiate the subtle nuanced difference between what would be a traditional hotel versus that of upstairs housing. And so based off of that, I would, I would submit for the commission's consideration that the permitted use, the, the defined permit, sorry, the defined use listed in this design review has a potential mismatch to what is listed in the downtown specific plan only because it's, it's not terribly, there's a lot of gray area there. And in my experience on this commission is that we live in the gray area as far as all of the interpretation of these documents and our, our deliberation as far as how we may agree or disagree on that gray area. The last bit I have here is mostly about, let's see, yeah, the, the whole thing with the SEQA, you know, there are findings within respect of the, of the staff report that indicate that, yes, you know, whereas notwithstanding CCC FPD's determination on the CCC FPD project, the city finds exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, yada, yada, yada. Essentially, what we're saying there is that this commission concurs with the, what I would describe as the self-acknowledged self-assessment that, I, I believe it was Chief McAllister's signature on that document, in which they indicated that they met the series of criteria that justified the exemption. And that in looking at this, part of what we're attempting to do is, is validate, is that, is that valid? And so I would, I would also recommend that this commission review that as, to say yay or nay with respect to that finding. And other than that, that's, those are my comments here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brand. All right. Anybody want another round? I'll go. All right. Yeah, we'd like to take a 10-minute break. Yeah, we'd like to take a 10-minute break. Thank you, everybody. We're about ready to start. All right, so I guess I'm up. First thing I wanted to talk about is just, well, first of all, I share Commissioner Johnson's disappointment that this is so contentious and wasn't able to be worked out at a little bit friendlier level. But be that as it may, it's not anything that we're making findings on here tonight. So there are things we can do, things we can't do. We're the planning commission, we're not a court of law. We can evaluate the design. We have limited scope, if any, really, to demand in EIR. The scope would be if there was something in the design. And our staff has reviewed that extensively, and they're, they're telling us that we probably don't have anything that we can, we can use for that. So we will discuss it. We're not going to give anything short shrift here tonight. And I think that, out of respect for all the people that came, and I want to say something to the applicant about the comment letter that we received. I understand, you know, your frustration and your desire to get on with this project. But when we have this many members of the public come for us, come before us and state concerns, we're going to address their concerns. And we're not going to just, you know, blow over it, you know, we're not going to take a 10-minute meeting, give you your approval, and send you on your way. We're going to talk about everything. And that's only right. We serve the public. We're appointed up here by elected officials who are elected by the public. This is a public meeting. And we're going to do that, we're going to take the time that we need. And again, I appreciate your impatience, but honestly, some of the things that were said in that, in that were a little bit, I don't know. So as far as what's apt and what's not apt, that's our decision. We don't tell you what you guys do, and you probably shouldn't come in here and tell us what we do. But nonetheless, I do appreciate too that there was a statement, and one of the things that we ordered you to make these reports, and that really wasn't the intention. We were asking staff, and, and staff, just because of the flow of how an application works, we'll go to the applicant. But we weren't trying to push you around or anything. We legitimately wanted some more information. And thankfully, the staff has provided a staff report that provides a lot of that information. So I think that what you're asking us to do is to review the design. So I started with that last time, I still have my notes. You'll forgive me, I have a lot of paper notes, I'm a computer person, and this is not a computer operation over here. A lot of what we do, and if you're curious about how we make decisions, what you should do is look at the resolution that staff puts in front of us and recommends that we pass. And in that resolution, there are findings. And we have to agree with those findings. We have to believe them. We have to be willing to put our names on them. We vote, and the people that vote yes are responsible for making that decision. And so we're going to ask, you know, questions about findings. One of the findings. Let me get the, let me get it up, I have, I have the packet right here. There's the resolution. So if you go through the resolution, the whereas is our things that support the findings, and then the findings. And the finding is, you'll notice 1A is we have, are being asked to find that the proposed project is exempt from SEQA as it qualifies for a Class 32 categorical exemption under the SEQA guidelines. And so, yeah, yeah, we have business up here looking at the EIR and deciding whether or not you're exempt. And we have very narrow restrictions around what we can find on that. Nonetheless, it is our business, and so it's, it's not as "inapp", which is the word that was being thrown around, as you might imagine. We, we have to make that finding. So yeah, yeah, we have to go and find whether or not the EIR exemption is valid. Because it asks us right here, it says, this is finding 1A. The proposed project is exempt from SEQA as it qualifies as a Class 32 categorical exemption under the SEQA guidelines, Section 15332, as it is characterized as infill development, meeting the following conditions. One, the project is consistent with the existing general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as with the applicable zoning designation and regulations. Two, the proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. Three, the project site has no value for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Four, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic noise, air quality, or water quality. And five, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. And really, the one that, most of this is, sure, it's given, but I was, I was really curious as to whether it really is consistent with the existing general plan designation and all general, applicable general plan policies. As you may not know, the downtown specific plan is a piece of the general plan. And so if it's not consistent with the downtown specific plan, then it wouldn't be consistent with the general plan. And so we, we do need to consider that. And for approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. And we understand, we understand, SEQA says traffic is VMT. There is some noise, there's some air quality questions and water quality questions that did come up. So, yeah, that is something that we can talk about. We're asked to do the design review under Section 17820007 of the Brentwood Municipal Code. One, the proposed development shall create a well-composed urban design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the total setting as seen from key vantage points in the community. So yeah, the, the appearance of the building, whether it's harmonious, that's in our purview. We can, we can, we can talk about that. We're not trying to, you know, mess with you in any way. Four, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. This is not an EIR. This is a design review. We can talk about traffic, we can talk about circulation patterns, we can talk about whether or not parking lots are the right size, right location, whether the ingress and egress is, is going to work. We have a traffic engineer. Yeah, we can, we can talk about traffic, we don't have to limit ourselves to VMT, that's, that's for SEQA. But this isn't SEQA, this is a design review. Here we go. Under four, which is, where the proposed development is located in an area for which a specific plan, which this is plan development, neighborhood plan, or precise plan has been adopted, the design of the development shall conform in all significant respects with such plans. And I did ask last time what the architectural style was. Because we have specific guidelines on what, what we have down there. And it was, the answer we got back is that it's American Main Street, which is closely related to something that is one of the architectural styles, but it's not one of the architectural styles. And this relationship was not explained to us. And so with no explanation, no report, somebody brought up that we're not allowed to go find our own information, that's not true. I went and looked, I tried to find out what American Main Street design is. As far as I can tell, there is no such thing. I, I wasn't able to find any reference in any architectural resources I looked at. The only thing I could find is that it's kind of a mosh of various architectural styles. So yeah, you could say it was related to something because it's related to a lot of things, but it's not necessarily one of the styles that we want for our downtown specific plan as shown, and then downtown specific plan. I did go and have a stab at identifying what the style of it is, is when I had it looked at. The architectural style of this building can be broadly described as utilitarian commercial architecture, our municipal institutional architecture, and I agree with that, it sure looks institutional. I did try to find out what, what might be related architectural styles and maybe classical revival, brutalist, modernist, art deco, contemporary municipal architecture. Clearly, it's not art deco, sadly. It doesn't seem to be classical revival, brutal. Brutalist, it's not raw concrete. It's got a brick facade. Modernist institutional architecture, that sure sounds like it. Emphasizes clean lines, minimal ornamentation, efficiency, often found in schools, fire stations, hospitals. Uses materials like brick, glass, and steel for practicality and durability. It looks a lot like that. Contemporary municipal architecture focuses on sustainability, energy efficiency, and open public spaces. Uses glass, sod, sleek metal finishes. So it's modern materials. So it's a little bit less like that. It's also found in fire stations and libraries, police stations. So I would say, if I had to put a style on it, I'd say it's a modernist institutional architecture. And that's pretty far from what we're looking for. Let's see, five. Does talk a little bit about parking. You are removing some parking spaces. We could talk about that. Six. Six makes a couple of assertions. The siting and internal arrangement of all structures and other facilities on the site, including the land uses, internal circulation, off-street parking and loading facilities, lighting, signing and access to and from public rights shall be conducive to an orderly, attractive, efficient, and harmonious development. Depends on how you define harmonious, I guess. Proposed development shall not have adverse environmental effects on adjacent developments existing or potential by reason of conflicts in land use, topography, or traffic. Well, you've got a little bit of a conflict with an existing veterans hall next door. I don't know. Seven here. Seven has this finding, if we would approve this, the City of Brentwood Design Guidelines and any other applicable specific design criteria or standards set out in this title or other city ordinances, which is a lot. I certainly don't have all of the design guidelines memorized. And I got a one-sentence paragraph. It's an infill project. It is substantial landscaping proposed, and it uses quality materials and craftsmanship. I'm not sure that's all of it. We could sit here all night and go through the design guidelines. All applicable regulations of the zoning ordinance and other city ordinances, policies, or resolutions. Again, it just says it's applicable, basically. It meets parking, landscaping, and development requirements, condition to meet all building engineering and public work skills. You know? Since it was brought up, I'd like to go ahead and take a little time. These two sections in Brentwood Municipal Code were referenced to us for consideration. We were told that this is what the applicant wants us to focus on because that's what we're supposed to do, according to the applicant. Section 17820.007, Design and Site Review Criteria. The Architectural Review Committee, Community Development Director, and on appeal, the City Council, and in this case, we're kind of serving as the Architectural Review Committee, this law, in consideration of all applications for design and site development review shall determine whether the proposed project conforms to the following criteria. A, proposed development shall create a well-composed urban design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the total setting as seen from key vantage points in the community. B, elements of design which have significant relationship to the exterior appearance of structures and facilities shall be given special consideration. These elements include, but are not limited to, height, arrangement on the site, texture, lighting, material, color, signs, landscaping size, bulk and scale, and appurtenances. C, the proposed development shall be of a quality and character appropriate to and serving to protect the value of private and public investments in the immediate area. So in other words, if your development doesn't protect the value of other investments in the immediate area, that's something we talk about. D, where the proposed development is located in an area for which a specific plan, plan development, neighborhood plan, or precise plan has been adopted by the City Council, design of development shall conform in all significant respects with such plans. We've heard that before. E, the proposed development shall conform with all requirements for landscaping, screening, parking, usable open space, and off-street loading as set forth in this title. F, the site development criteria set forth in Section 17820.008. G, the City of Brentwood Design Guidelines Draft, dated February 1, 2001, and any other applicable specific design criteria or standards set out in this title or other city ordinance. H, all applicable regulations of the zoning ordinance and other city ordinances, policies, or resolutions. So kind of a lot that we have to consider. Section 17820.008, Site Development Review Criteria. The following criteria shall be applied in considering all applications for design and site development review approval. A, the siting and internal arrangement of all structures and other facilities on the site, including the land uses, internal circulation, off-street parking and loading facilities, lighting, signing, and access to and from public rights of way shall be conducive to an orderly, attractive, efficient, and harmonious development. B, the proposed development shall not have adverse environmental effects on adjacent developments existing or potential by reason of conflicts in land use, topography, or traffic. Again, we can look at traffic. We can't require an EIR. We can't say what the VMT is. But we can certainly, under our own municipal code, which is compliant, by the way, with the state constitution. We can't consider traffic. So just so you know. That in mind. We had a letter, the itemized letter. And I do appreciate the letter, by the way. It was well-intended, I think, to address some of the concerns we expressed last time. It wasn't always most respectfully worded, but it was well-intended. So I just wrote some basic notes on it. One, streets are tight. And there was reference to the video. There are some things about that video. The video does show that a truck can turn around in there and stuff. But what it didn't show, any example of what that looks like during farmer's market hours, school hours, Oktoberfest, when there's people, you know, maybe a little bit too exuberant wandering around, or any other city events that have increased in size since the time the station was last open. And also, there are things about how there's discussion in there how because you're in the middle of everything, you can get to things quickly. But there's no discussion of if you're in the middle of everything and you have to maneuver around it, could you get there quickly from an external site that would have another path in? So to me, it was, it was just, you're just showing that the trucks can turn around in there. And it wasn't really that, that deep. But be that as it may. Fire station might need to expand. And this was said to me by a battalion chief. Or I think it was battalion chief. I have his card at home. That there needs to be room to expand. And, you know, we went and visited 92. And, yeah, it's true. It wasn't expanded. You know what they did? They needed more capacity, so they just crammed more people in there. They tightened it up. So, yeah, maybe you'll just be making it more crowded inside if you need to. But that was not something that, you know, I just made up when I asked about it. It was something that had been relayed to me by somebody in your business. Veterans will lose storage. This is, whether this is an apt or not, but this is apt under 17820.008, which we were just reading out. Says the proposed development shall not have adverse environmental effects on adjacent developments existing or potential. Potential says, you know, we can look at the future. We're allowed. By reason of conflicts in land use, topography, or traffic. Veterans ADA requirements, also apt under 17820.08, was the transfer to the fire department legal? We're not making any findings on that, and we never claimed to. I can see why a member of the public watching this proceeding might be concerned because, you know, there's a project out there that might get tangled up in legalities or, you know, court fights or whatever. And maybe there's a half-construted fire department down there for two years while the courts figure it out. I don't know. But it's not my business. It really is not. You're very correct there. That's not before us today. Does ADA apply? Again, we're not doing a CEQA review. We never really claimed to be doing one. And I believe actually that any building built in Brentwood will be ADA compliant because permitting. You know, we have an excellent staff here. They do their jobs very well. And I don't tell them how to do their jobs either. They just do them, and they do them incredibly well. May and farmer's market, et cetera. Again, this is apt under 17820.008. People have made investments in this town. Are they going to be affected by this design? Eight and nine Diablo Way issues. We've discussed that tonight. Oversized. I think there's some misunderstanding. When people talk about this thing being over, it just looks massive. It just appears because it's big, monolithic, red brick, rectangular building. And like some of the public speakers, I've seen fire stations that were genuinely harmonious with their surroundings. Mindful right now, Fredericksburg outside Austin. I was there a year and a half ago for the eclipse. And they have a beautiful downtown, a little downtown, not half the population we have here. But they've got room to spread out, Texas. And their fire department matches their downtown. And Fredericksburg, I really should go see because they use limestone blocks for everything. It's beautiful. It reminded me a little bit of Jerusalem in that regard. But it is truly in the rendering, just a monolithic, big red block of a building. The station should not be downtown. We're not talking about, this is covered under 17820.08. But we're not really taking a position in terms of whether it's sufficient for the fire department, response times, et cetera. That's your business. I'm not telling you that. All I can do is say, is this design, does it fit in our downtown according to the downtown specific plan? And that is something that we are allowed to discuss. Other turn radius studies. Again, the geometry, it checks out if there's no obstructions. But the issue is whether there will be obstructions. Alternate site, we're not discussing that here tonight. And with all due respect to the veterans, and I know that this has been brought up a lot, but it's not in our purview. And nobody here is suggesting that it is. Risk to pedestrians? There was actually no objection to that review stated in your letter. There was just some talk about the warning lights and stuff. 15, 16, 17 have various issues, all apt under 17820.08 and 17820.09. Hazardous materials. I think the issue that was brought up under public comment, if I remember, was not related to hazardous materials on site that you would be building on top of, which would be a CEQA thing. They were more concerned about the possibility of future hazardous materials being brought back from fire sites and being rinsed off the trucks and off of the firefighter's equipment and stuff. And that is, you know, I mean, that's more of a use thing. But it is contemplated under the design review statutes that were very handily provided to me in that letter. So there's a lot that we can talk about here. I, for one, am not convinced that this building is the right architectural style for downtown Brentwood. And until I'm convinced of that, I'm going to have trouble making a finding if there's somebody that wants to try to convince me otherwise on the commission, that this is an appropriate design. I mean, really, architectural style for a building going into downtown Brentwood. All of the stuff that I read last time out of the DSP pries out, says, no, let's don't do that here. They talked, they kind of rapped lyrical about doing things the Brentwood way. They wanted, when they wrote this thing, they wanted to have a beautiful downtown. They wanted it to look a certain way. And what we are tasked with as planning commissioners is upholding the general plan. And we are sworn, we are sworn to protect the Constitution of California. And the general plan is an artifact of that constitution. So I feel almost compelled to deny this design review. And I'm having a real hard time if I have an open mind and I'll hear any discussion on the commission. But to me, and Vice Chair Brand has brought up a couple of points about maybe we do need a CUP because some of the uses are defined as needing CUP, a gym, a living space that might be construed as being a hotel, which when I went to 92, that's basically what I saw was a hostel. I saw beds. I saw people moving in and out every two days, bringing all their stuff with them and then having to take it home so there was room for the next staff to come on and stay there. I don't know if we even need to make a ruling on that. But it's certainly a valid question. The parking doesn't have the buffer that's required. And, you know, I kind of understand why because you need to be able to get your equipment back there, but still parking. Generator is out beyond the 65-foot limit. Might need a CUP. So, yeah, there's plenty here. And I think that what I would suggest to you is right on the same site where you found the municipal code, there is a copy of the downtown specific plan. It's freely available for download. And maybe you could look at it, see if you could come up with a plan that looked like something that the DSP envisions for downtown. But we haven't voted yet, so I'll save that. Does anybody else have any more discussion?
If no one's ready, if any, no other discussion, I'll be ready to make a motion.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Sorry. What I would recommend at this point, because staff had prepared the agenda packet, obviously, to approve based on the resolution that was attached. We would be prepared, however, to craft a denial resolution. Unfortunately, we would need to take another recess in order to do that. I don't know exactly how long, but I would say at least 15 minutes or so will work as quickly as we can. But what I would recommend is that if there is a motion made to deny the project, that the maker of the motion specify the reasons why that we can then craft into a resolution for the findings. If it's seconded, that's when we would pause, go to recess, craft that resolution. When we come back into session, we can display that on the screen so that everybody can see it, especially the commission. And if the commission's okay with it, then we can proceed with the roll call vote.
Yeah, that sounds like a good procedure for me.
Okay.
Vice Chair Brand, did you get all that?
Yeah, I've got all that. Let's see. I'd like to make a motion to deny the designer view application DR 24-013 for the reasons including, we'll start with, I believe it's the massing, the color congruence with adjacent historical buildings, the tones consistent with Brentwood's agricultural heritage. Let's see what else. Chair Flori. Chair Flor, I think you had mentioned something. You mentioned a couple of things specifically to about architectural style, specifics about the parking consistency with landscaping, the general congruence, incongruence with the downtown specific plan. I'm trying to think of what else that we called out here. I've taken some notes, but I think I missed a few.
Well, I was concerned about whether or not this was good for the investments made in the surrounding community. But for instance, you know, Oak Street a few years back was narrowed down to make more room, and I don't think that we could do the same thing. But on First Street, if we had a fire station there, but yeah, I don't know. Do you have any friendly amendments?
Yeah, open to friendly amendments, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Johnson.
No, I think that that speaks to the design aspect of it. You know my stance on safety and compliance, but as it relates to the design aspect, I think that you covered it very well. It's unfortunate that the fire department elected not to provide us with the information we needed in order to study and make a decision based on that information. So unfortunately, we've had to task, take to task and find these things out on our own, independent of this so-called letter. And I think you hit it on the nail as it relates to the building and how it does not conform to what we have downtown and what the downtown specific plan requests. So I'll stand with that. And if you've completed it, I'll be the first to say I'll second it.
Vice Chair Brand, was that your complete motion?
Yeah. We'll leave that open to a second.
And, okay, we have a motion and we have a second, so should we move into crafting the?
Fifteen minutes?
Yes, we can, but I would say at least a 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll be taking a break. Thank you. Sorry, we had just had one too. Apologies.
Actually have a draft denial resolution for you to consider. I think April is going to put that up. One second.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be with you in just a second. I'm having to sign back in. You have it. Great, thanks, April. Okay, so this is the draft resolution or denial. It's a version of the approval resolution that was in the packet, but of course we've modified it extensively. So you'll notice up at the top, a resolution denying a design review. Some of the recitals are the same, but we've removed a few, including the ones that reference any sort of sequo determination. Because sequo determinations do not need to be made for projects that are denied. So that's not in here anymore. And I'm scrolling relatively quickly. If any of the commissioners want me to stop at any point, please let me know. But otherwise, I will get to the really important pieces, which are the findings. So this one here, 1A, 1A with respect to 17.820.007 on the well-composed urban design. And you can see the three-line paragraph at the bottom of the page there. So I would ask each of the commissioners to review carefully, but especially Vice Chairperson Brand as you were the one that made the denial motion. Any particular thoughts or concerns about the wording on this finding?
That seems consistent. I imagine, I don't know, anybody else have comments?
I'm fine with it.
And there are more, by the way, but that's, that's just for this one. Okay, I'm going to keep scrolling. So Roman numeral two on elements of design that have significant relationship to exterior appearance of structures. And this is sort of in the middle of the page. The proposed building would not complement the existing buildings in the downtown area due to its size and brick composition. The size, bulk, and scale do not reflect the agricultural character of the area. So I'll just pause there and take any comments.
It looks good to me.
Okay. Roman numeral three, talking about the quality and character. And this is a fairly straightforward one. It's just one sentence. The proposed project is not complementary to the surrounding downtown and would not protect the value of the surrounding area.
Yeah, I think that was mine. I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then the last one is Roman numeral four. This has to do with the, essentially the parking, and I think this is one of the issues that you had brought up during deliberation, Vice Chairperson Brand. So we added that one as well to recognize the fact that while it's not required, the project does not in fact provide adequate landscaping as required.
That's correct, yes, consistent with my motion.
Okay. And then this is consistent with each resolution the planning commission adopts. But just again here, if you look at letter B, with all of the foregoing included, the commission would therefore then deny design review based on those findings? And then again, for the commission's benefit, but also for the benefit of the public, if this motion is in fact adopted, it would trigger a 10-day appeal period in which anybody could appeal this decision to the city council. So unless there's any other questions from the commission, there's already been the motion second, I believe by Commissioner Roberts. We would then be ready for a roll call vote.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I think we're ready.
Vice Chair Brand, can you confirm once again that there's no one in the room with you?
Confirmed.
Commissioner Roberts? Can you mute your mic, please? Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Brand?
Aye.
Chairperson floor?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. And thank you guys for coming. We're going to move into informational reports from committees and upcoming meeting schedule. Transplan, Commissioner Brand, Vice Chair Brand, sorry.
No meeting, so no update.
Design Review Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Land Use and Development Committee, yeah, we did meet. We had the regularly scheduled meeting. We considered the affordable housing distribution through the Hanson Lane project. And that was approved by the city council members on that committee. And of course, the planning commissioner on that committee does not vote. Brentwood Municipal Code Review Committee, Vice Chair Brand?
Still haven't met this year, so hopefully soon.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to requests for future agenda items. Do we have any future items?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I'd like to have, as soon as we can, I need to know how many applications are completed and ready for the commission to review? How many are not? And how are these applications determined on who is reviewed first and who makes that decision? So it's all relative to the applications. But that's what I'd like to have a conversation about. I know that Costco is a major footprint in the city of Brentwood. And as such, there's quite a bit of activity being generated in the city of Brentwood. So I just need to know what that activity looks like in terms of applications that are ready for review here in the city of Brentwood? And how many are still in the hopper being considered? And how those decisions are being made? Eric?
I was just going to ask if I could to like clarify questions?
Sure.
So are you talking about applications as a whole or specific types of applications?
Apply anything that comes before the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess that would be both residential and business.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm fine having it as a discussion item and we can sort of get into detail. But would you also be okay if I basically compiled the information and distributed it to the commission in the form of like an email?
That'd be fine.
And then that might satisfy the curiosity? And if there are other questions that come out of it, or if you want to talk in more detail about any of them, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay.
I'm thinking that might get you what you need.
That would be fine. What I'm trying to get at is, you know, I know we've got a lot of downtime. We've missed a couple of meetings. And I'm sure a lot of it had to do with everything that you and your team had to prepare relative to this fire thing. And I get that. But I do know that a lot of these applications in the hopper, I don't know to what degree, but I'd like for the commission to at least get an understanding or have an understanding of what we're looking at for the rest of this year.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, you could put it in an email. That'd be fine by me.
Great, I'll get to work on that.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? All right. The next direct regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for May 20th, 2025 at 7 o'clock PM. And will be held here at the council chambers located at 150 City Parkway. Do we need a roll call for this next motion, or can we just do a voice vote?
I don't think you technically need a roll call, but you do need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Make a motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okey dokey, autochoke.